So we're gonna bring in Park and Rec first, I think.
Okay, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order, Board of Selectmen's meeting, August 4th, 6:30 PM. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If anyone is in the audience for us, we have a 7:30 request for a Class 2 license. If there's anybody in the audience who is here to speak on that, that has been continued to Monday, September 8th at 6:35. So you're welcome to stick around, but you can go home and watch this on TV if you want. Let's see, first, the first appointment at 7 o'clock was supposed to be for a joint meeting with the school committee, school building committee and Board of Selectmen. If you're agreeable to the board, I would like to bump them in favor of, well, not in favor, that doesn't sound right, but if I could, the Park and Rec Commission, we have a joint meeting with the Park and Rec Commission to appoint two vacancies. So if I could have the members of the Park and Rec Commission up here, please? And we have two candidates for two positions, so this should be pretty easy. The two candidates are Michelle Christian Oldham and Suzanne DeJuesberg. Oh, Michelle, you can't sit with the board yet. You're not a member. All right, I guess we're lucky. Tracy Romalad, Romalad is the chairman. Would you like to introduce the other members of the board?
Yes, this is Sean Ryan and Mike Raskin.
You're welcome. The way this goes, we're already in session, I believe you guys are already in session now. If there was two or three people here, we'd discuss the merits of the two or three people, we'd ask them all kinds of questions. There's only one person here, Michelle, so... Does the board like to ask Michelle any questions and put her on the spot?
I think we have like 10 or 15.
Very familiar with Michelle.
She gave us a very extensive resume and detailed all of her work and she's pushing... Yes, she's pushing her children's book. We won't talk about that on camera. So I would entertain a motion from the board for the two applicants, if they want.
I'll move, nominate Michelle for position.
Okay. In a second. Taken one at a time, okay. So I would ask the board to vote, our board, and then your vote, board, to vote on Michelle Christian Oldham as a member of the Park and Rec Commission.
Yes.
Unanimous? Your three members? Good job. And the other applicant, who is, I told her 7:15, so she's, you know, she has two minutes. We can wait two minutes if you want, or we can just vote to... We know an awful lot about Suzanne DeJuesberg, so...
I'll nominate Suzanne.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor? Okay, well, that was painless. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you for everything you do. Thanks. Okay. Now, we have the show. School Committee, School Building Committee, Board of Selectmen, to vote and approve and authorize the OPM... What does that stand for? Thank you. To submit the schematic design-related submissions for the Frollo School Project, a co-located grade five through 12 middle school and high school with pre-kindergarten to MSBA for consideration. That's what is on the agenda tonight. I'm not sure how we're gonna do this, but I'd like to welcome the school committee up here, if they would be so kind. And I believe with the three different boards, you guys have to, are you in session now? Yep, so you, okay. We can turn a microphone, oh, there's a microphone there, okay. If you want.
So, I'd like to call into session the meeting of the Abington School Committee. It's Monday, August 4th at 7:15.
Okay, and does the other board here tonight have to go into session also, the school building committee?
Yes.
I don't know how you can do that. You can just yell really loud.
I'd like to call to order the Abington School Building Committee meeting of August 4th, 2014.
How many, how many members are on that committee tonight, here tonight?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, well, this is where the biggest meeting I've ever been in charge of, so I'm kinda a little scared here. Okay. So I guess we're gonna have a presentation first? Is that the way it's gonna work?
Yes.
It's all yours. This is going so well already.
Thank you for having us this evening. We're gonna ask Scott Dunlap, our architect from AI3, to give a brief overview of the project, as well as review the present project scope and budget. At that point, we'll open it up for questions and answers to members of the school committee, as well as the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to commend the committee thus far for their work. We've been meeting for almost two years now to determine the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solution to the town's school building needs. And I think you'll find this evening that the committee was successful in accomplishing that. So I'd like to turn it over to Scott to start the presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Rich. And thank you to the, certainly to the boards and committees. Everybody's nice turn, very nice turnout tonight. I recognize that many, many of the faces here are very familiar with the content of the feasibility study work and the schematic design work that's been done for a proposed new Abington Middle High School. So we're going to be brief tonight in going through the presentation, but certainly we can circle back if there are any questions or any specific topics that anyone would like to discuss in more detail. I'm gonna talk just briefly about schedule because just as Chairman Tessa mentioned, this is a process that has been going on for a very long time, even going back eight years ago to October of 2006, when the town of Abington first notified the Massachusetts School Building Authority that you might possibly be interested in studying your educational facilities' needs. And then it was, in fact, two years ago when the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, voted to issue the town of Abington an opportunity to begin the study of a feasibility analysis to potentially come up with a solution for solving the educational needs in the town. So for the last two years, there's been a lot of activity. And we have been before this group of boards and the school committee on two prior occasions over the last year. You may recall, we first came before you to present the original schematic study and report. That had to be voted collectively by the groups. Then, and that was the, a lot of the early analysis material that we then came before you and presented a variety of different options that were considered, many different options that were considered. And the groups, the various boards and committees, voted to select a single option and continue to move forward with that. And now we're at the end of what the Massachusetts School Building Authority refers to as the schematic design phase. And again, they are seeking a vote, they being the Massachusetts School Building Authority, are seeking a vote from the building committee, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen collectively to endorse the fact that this project, as proposed, represents the town's preferred direction in terms of moving forward with a new building project. The subsequent to tonight, just as it indicates on this schedule, will be submitting on August 7th the entire schematic design package. Now, certainly tonight is a very brief overview. The package, in fact, includes, just as all of the other packages did, a number of drawings, documents, literally hundreds of pages of documentation, analysis, study, cost estimates, et cetera, that will be reviewed by the Massachusetts School Building Authority over the next month. They will then vote in September to give their official and final approval to this project. And then subsequent to that, the anticipation would be that the town of Abington would go into a town meeting sometime in October. And we've always said in the fall. I know there are a number of dates. And in fact, tonight, after our discussion, there's gonna be discussion by the Board of Selectmen about exactly when the town meeting vote and a potential dead exclusion vote would be. So those are really moving targets on this particular schedule. But the MSBA, once they make their decision at the end of September, provides the town with 120 days to take that commitment, meaning that town meeting vote and that dead exclusion vote, to consider support of the project. Subsequent to that, we would be moving forward, assuming that the town elects to move this project forward, we'd be moving forward with continued design work in anticipation that a project could potentially start construction in the fall of 2015. The proposed site for a new, potential new project remains the Abington High School site. This is an aerial of that site that the boards and the committees have seen on numerous occasions. This is just as a reminder that, in fact, the high school site includes all of the property that you see bounded here. And the proposed area for a new school facility is directly behind the existing high school. There's been a lot of discussion about the drainage on the site. The website and the committee has received a number of questions recently. And it's not, it's not a new question. It's something the building committee asked in the very beginning, but certainly as interest in the project continues to heighten, it's a question that comes up. So I just wanna clarify, when the new high school was built, a lot of the existing soil in this area was removed and moved up to the area of the new high school. And it made this a relatively low area. When the new high school was built, this area was graded off as a very flat area. And when the new high schools, or when the, the high school as we know it, I should say, was built, there was no drainage in this area for the drainage of the field. So in fact, this area doesn't drain particularly well because it's a relatively low area as it exists now. A lot of material was removed from it. It has no drainage structures whatsoever for the field area. And then the slope is very flat. Ideally, you would shed this water off of the site and it wouldn't be allowed to remain stagnant and sit on the site. So those are the problems now that create the water that remains in place there. All of those constraints would be resolved as the result of construction of a new building in that area. And we'll talk about that a little bit when we look at the new site plan. The newly proposed site plan, very similar to what you saw during our last discussion, our preferred schematic, submittal to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Still a proposed building to be located behind the existing high school. And the existing high school is dotted in in black. It's a little hard to read here, but it's outlined right here on this site plan. The proposal would be to build a facility that is a co-located middle school and high school, two separate and distinct buildings joined on the same site by some common shared core facilities. The building on your left, as you look at this site plan, is the middle school building. Building on your right is the high school building with the pre-K actually located in this back zone right here. The common shared core facilities down the middle, a middle school gymnasium, a high school gymnasium on their respective sides, but then a shared auditorium, a middle school dining space, cafeteria space on their side, and then a high school middle, or high school dining space, again, dedicated to the high school site. We'll look at that in more detail just briefly in the floor plan. But again, if you imagine a line down the middle separating the middle school from the high school. The parking is the same way. Separate entrances and parking for the high school side of the site. Separate entrances and parking and circulation for the middle school side of the site. Separating the drop-off traffic on the middle school side and the high school side respectively. Creating a high school, separate high school student parking lot on this side to keep that traffic from the middle school side. Creating areas for new fields. Two new proposed multipurpose synthetic turf fields in the rear here. Two new proposed multipurpose fields located both here and here in the front of the building. Much the same as the site design that you've seen previously. And certainly, we've spent a lot of hours detailing the specifics that would go into this site design. And I know that the Board of Selectmen, the school committee members, and certainly the building committee members have been very active and participatory in our meetings and discussions so far. So you're very familiar with the amount of time that has gone into studying the details of what may go into the site. This is the entire first-floor building plan. It's essentially the area that you see in orange here is more delineated and more detailed in this first-floor plan in that you see the middle school located here. You see the high school located here. You see the high school administration and control point and separate entry and control point here. You see the middle school administration and control area with a separate entry and control point here. You've got middle school drop-off area here, high school drop-off area here. Again, each on separate sides of the building. A dedicated middle school gym with circulation to the middle school side. Dedicated high school gym with circulation to the high school side. A shared auditorium. Separate high school dining space for the high school. Separated middle school dining space for the middle school. All of the same components that we've talked about all along in establishing a middle, separate middle school and separate high school as a co-located building on the, on the same site. Second floor, very similar. I would point out that just as we have talked about and proposed all along in the middle school, you're really talking about five through eight and you're talking about a five-six school on one floor and a seven-eight school on the other floor. So even the middle school is broken down into two subschools, if you will, in terms of the segregation of the population. Provides a lot of different educational benefits that we've also referred to and talked about extensively in the past. This is an aerial perspective rendering that gives you a little more sense of the volume in terms of the space as it sits on the site. The middle school being the building that you see located here. The high school being the building that you see located here. This gives you a little bit more sense of kinda the height and spatial relationships of the building. Also gives you a little more sense of the segregation when you think about the high school parking lot, student parking lot here and the high school parking lot and the high school drop-off area at the rear here. And then high school entry and control point here. Middle school drop-off area back over here and the middle school entry and control point here. Also starts to give a suggestion of what the architectural style, some of the materials and the aesthetics of the building would be as we began to develop the, the style and the, and the architecture and the aesthetic for the building. Certainly, the building committee felt strongly that there should be a connection between this building and the other buildings in the surrounding area, meaning the town hall and the library building, and keeping with that kinda traditional aesthetic of materials, brick, pre-cast, some little mancered roofs, sloped roofs, those kinda things around the perimeter to bring the scale of the building down and make it appear as if, when this project, if it continues to move forward, is completed, that the entire area here would function as a campus with some connections between the buildings and it wouldn't have, you wouldn't, it wouldn't, none of the buildings would be dated. It would appear that it was very intentional that each building had the style that it did. Just some close-ups showing what that means when you utilize that traditional palette of red brick, pre-cast concrete, the white-framed windows. You will see in these renderings that there are some sunscreens across the windows. They're the horizontal bands that you see projecting from the buildings in some locations. Those are part of the sunscreening and the daylighting that is worked into the design of a typical 21st century high school or middle school where the Massachusetts School Building Authority wants to be certain that this is a very green building, that it's a very energy-efficient building, and that it's a minimum of lead-silver building, which includes a lot of energy-efficient components. But one of those is capturing the ability to naturally light all of the classrooms with a minimal amount of artificial lighting. And, and that requires that you have some sunscreening to block the, the sun that you don't want coming directly into class, in the classroom, but to capture the natural light that you do want in the classroom. This is a close-up of the entry area where we're right up next to the middle school entry, I'm sorry, the high school entry here. And then we see the middle school entry in the distance. Each entry being somewhat symbolized by a higher tower element, two-story element on each side. And certainly you see the introduction of some canopies and some other things to protect you and inclement weather. Now, I would emphasize that this is schematic design, although the Massachusetts School Building Authority wants us to begin to take a look at what the style and material, exterior materials of the building would be. As we move on, assuming the town elects to continue to move the project forward, when we move on into design, we would be looking at the exterior design and the details associated with that a lot more extensively. This is looking at a close-up of the end of the high school wing that is closest to the entry point. And then you see the, the middle school entry and the high school entry in the distance. So you're looking at the corner just off of that very front visitors' parking lot on the high school side. This is, this is at the rear of the building on the two synthetic turf multipurpose fields that I described. And looking back at the auditorium area, this would be the high school drop-off entry area. Looking into the corner, you're seeing the high school dining area. And then you're seeing the, a portion of the pre-kindergarten entry area. And then right behind that, the continuation of the high school building. Over here, you're seeing the, the upper floor of the gymnasium off here, right here. One of the things that we had to do as part of the schematic design submittal in preparation for approval from the Massachusetts School Building Authority was a much more comprehensive round of cost estimating. And then the compilation of that cost estimating into a total project budget. This is the total project budget summary. On this particular document, the only thing I want to highlight is that the total project budget, after a very comprehensive analysis by two independent and separate cost estimators and a review of all the other soft costs associated with the project, which includes architectural fees, engineering fees, furniture and equipment for the building, technology for the building, project contingencies. We'll talk about those other categories. But literally everything involved with the project, after an additional review of all of the budget, the budget remains the same number that it has really since initial preliminary feasibility was done, which is the very first phase that was done and approved by the boards and committees. And that is, the total of 96.4 million remains the total project budget for the project. That is made up of primarily the construction budget. And the schematic design phase is the phase where the Mass, the School Building Authority requires us and you as a town to take a very detailed look at the cost of this project. And because their ultimate goal is to lock in, subsequent to this schematic submittal, a contract with the town that essentially says, this is the exact cost of the project and it will not go any higher. And so as your partner in participating in the cost of this, they wanna make certain that the cost estimating is all correct. And they also wanna make sure that your total budget, not only your construction costs and your, but your total budget is all set. So they will be reviewing all of the documentation that we've submitted. We've just put in one page here as a sample from the, happens to be the PM and C cost estimate, which is the independent cost estimator that was working on our behalf. There was another independent cost estimator working on behalf of your owner's project manager. Also did a very detailed estimate. And by detailed estimate, the two estimates combined are something in the order of 90 to 100 pages of detailed line items of everything that would make up the construction component of the project. The two estimators within, after reconciliation, came to within $50,000 or so on a 78 million, 77, 78 million dollar construction project. So that is very good. By the way, we don't often have the luxury of having the cost estimators agree that closely. So we think we have a very tight package that the MSBA is going to be very pleased with as a result of that. Those cost estimates, along with everything else associated with the project, again, things like legals fee, legal fees, your costs associated with owner's project management, your costs associated with architecture and engineering, your costs associated with furniture and equipment for the building. Literally, everything that would potentially go into this project has to be inserted into a form that the MSBA refers to as their Form 3011. This is their document, and it's where they sort out, line item by line item, every single piece of the project as part of their analysis of exactly how much of the project they're going to reimburse and exactly what your reimbursement rate will be as a town. And certainly, we know, and the building committee has published a range that we know it will fall within. But subsequent to submitting all of this schematic design package to the MSBA, they will tell you very specifically what their total participation in the project will be. And this form will be adjusted by the MSBA over the next month. The total of it, the total cost of it, the 96.4 million, which you see on the very last page of it, will not be adjusted. But there may be line item adjustments within the documents where the MSBA is looking at specifically, again, their reimbursement and their grant participation in each individual line item. And we know that it'll ultimately come out very close to the numbers you see here. But their final analysis will come as a result of them going through all of this documentation. And ultimately, they will present to the town what they call a project scope and budget agreement, which is their contract with the town should you decide to move forward with the project, delineating exactly how much money, how much grant money the state would be offering you as part of their participation. We have been asked on a number of occasions, what, you know, is this a relatively new program? Is this money really available? Is there the possibility that this grant will go away? Are other communities utilizing this same grant program? And so this slide is just an indication of the other communities in the area that have taken advantage of this program. And it's delineated in a way such that all of the towns that you see in green have completed a new construction project green have completed a new construction project within the last 10 years utilizing the MSBA grant program. And then the towns that you see in the cream color, within the last 10 years, have utilized the MSBA grant program and money to complete a major renovation project. Now, what is a major renovation project? A major renovation project means they took a school facility and did significant enough renovations such that that building was converted to new condition to be able to serve the community for another 40 to 50 years. So the MSBA perceives those kinds of projects as being the same project, whether it's a new construction or major renovation. It means a comprehensive reconstruction of all of the building components, also addressing things like overcrowding, et cetera. Then the two, or the three, I think, communities that are in orange have completed a major renovation using state grant money in the last 11 to 20 years. And then a lot of these communities have done minor projects. We don't have any minor, even Abington has done a minor repair project. That just means like you replace a boiler, or you replace some windows. We haven't included those on here. So all the communities you see here, with the exception of Abington, involve major projects. And we're just trying to show you a sense of the grant money that has been utilized and is certainly available, and the commitments that the school building authority has made to surrounding towns, to give you some confidence that certainly it is a solid program that has been in place for some time, and will continue to be in place to fund potentially a project in Abington. And I think with that, hopefully we didn't spend too much time going through that, we'll respond. Again, it's an enormous amount of information that has been generated in the last year. This is kind of the final step, at least of the schematic design. We went through the current status of the design very quickly, but would be happy, certainly the building committee, or we would be happy to respond to any questions or specific areas that you'd like to hear more about.
Thank you, Scott. Do any board members have any questions for Scott? Just, I'm not sure you can answer this one. September 24th, will the MSBA actually vote that day, or take into consideration?
That is the day they will vote. Yep. The board will vote on that day. Prior to that, approximately two to three weeks prior to that, there'll be a scope and budget conference where building committee members and school administration will be invited to come to the MSBA and have an informal discussion about the submittal and any remaining documents. So essentially, everything gets ironed out over that one-month period between the August 7th submittal and that scope and budget conference. And at that scope and budget conference, they will, I'm sorry, yeah, at the scope and budget conference, they'll essentially be able to tell the town most of what's going to be voted. But then on the 24th, it'll be the final vote by the board. And within a few days of that, the building committee and the superintendent of schools will receive a letter that includes that scope and budget agreement, that contract, if you will, and notification that in fact, Abington has been awarded the grant, should you choose to proceed.
Just one of them. More for the people watching at home. This was originally kind of sold as investigation of a middle school. How did we get from a middle school to a co-located? I know there was a lot of work that went into it. There were 13 proposals, I think, that we all looked at. And if you could just explain that a bit, as to how we got to this.
Certainly. Yeah. There were many, many steps that led to that. The MSBA requires as part of that feasibility study, and you have to designate a single project. Interestingly enough, in order to be invited into their program, you have to designate a single project, even though you may have multiple needs across multiple grade levels. So initially, the single project was identified as the middle school. And so it started off as a middle school feasibility study, because you designated a single project. You could have said high school, you could have said middle school. Subsequent to that, the MSBA requires that we study across all of your grade levels, potential deficiencies, overcrowding, building conditions for all of your buildings, so that we're not trying to solve a problem in a vacuum, if you will. And as a result of that study, and submitting that additional material to the MSBA, they realized that you had serious deficiencies at both the high school and the middle school level, and that you had not building deficiency, but overcrowding issues across the elementary school levels. And they pointed out through correspondence with the building committee and us, that you should be considering solutions that potentially solved all of those problems. So when the very first phase of this feasibility study was done, the options, just as you described, and there were many of them, many of them, some of them addressed only the middle school. But then some of them pointed out that with a single project, you could also address the high school needs and the elementary school overcrowding. The MSBA spent quite a bit of time evaluating all of those options, and ultimately came back to the town and to the building committee and said, in their opinion, there was really only one viable option. If they were going to be your partner in this long-term solution, and they were going to put $50 million into this project, they wanted to make sure that it solved all of the problems one single time, most economical way, and that you weren't coming back to them, for example, in five or 10 years, and asking for more grant money. So they came back and essentially said the only viable option, in their opinion, was to solve both the middle school and the high school by doing a co-located middle-high school. After that, there was additional analysis to determine if that would be a renovation and expansion option, or just a new building option. And after that evaluation, the MSBA also determined that the most viable solution for the town, and the one they would be interested in participating in, was the all-new option, primarily because it was the least expensive, and solved all of the educational needs, not only at the middle school and at the high school, but relieved overcrowding across all the elementary school, and allowed you long-term opportunities at both the pre-K and the kindergarten level as well. So.
Thank you. Good explanation. Tom?
Scott, is there any risk that the MSBA board will not vote on our proposal on the 24th? And I guess the nature of the question is, you know, I think we plan to put in motion some dates that have some cost, that if they don't vote on it, you know, what happens to those dates, and, you know, special town meetings and that sort of thing?
I would say there's no risk. Certainly, they may ask for some additional pieces of information, but they've marched with you through feasibility, preferred schematic, and even through this process. At this point in time, this is the project that they're prepared to support. They want to make sure that they have all the necessary documentation to do that. But I'm not aware of any time that they've marched through this far with the town and then not voted approval at that final board meeting.
Okay. The other question is on page 11. You had two independent cost estimating firms come in and provide an estimate. I think we talked about this before, but that's based on present-day construction cost, where we won't be putting the shovel in the ground until sometime in the fall of 2015. If construction costs escalate, how does the state handle that? Do they share those costs with us?
What they have done is they, the state, have asked each of those cost estimators to include construction escalation in there. So in each of those estimates, separate and independent from the itemization of the cost of the building in today's dollars, they've both included an escalation cost to get you to that fall 2015 date that you were referring to. The MSBA also requires that we include several other contingency factors, if you will. They require us to include a estimating and design contingency, which essentially means that at this stage, we have a very well-developed design, but certainly it's not a final design. So the cost estimator is carried between 5% and 8%. And you could tell, that would be a significant number. You know, you're talking about sort of $4 to $6 million as a design and estimating contingency at this point in time. In addition to that, the MSBA wants you to carry, at this point in time, a construction contingency to make sure if there are any unforeseen's during the construction period, those are covered. That's about 4%, or just around $4 million. And they want you to carry what they call an owner's contingency for miscellaneous items that may come up on your side, whether it's a legal cost that you didn't anticipate, or something like that. And so there's several hundred thousand dollars in owner's contingency in there. All of that is included in the 96.4 million. So what ultimately happens on all the projects that we've been involved with in the last several years with the MSBA, is this really is an absolute cap. Ultimately, most of these projects are completed for well under that cap, as a result of all the contingencies that are built in.
Thank you.
Sure.
Maury?
Speaking of contingencies and all that which is built in, can you speak also to the deconstruction of the existing high school? Is that all covered in here as well?
It is. The demolition and removal of the existing high school is included as part of the project. It's included in both of the construction cost estimates. That includes all of the abatement of all the hazardous materials in those buildings, not the middle school building, the high school building. Certainly, the middle school would stay, Troy would stay. But it includes the abatement and removal of all the hazardous materials in the high school prior to its demolition that has to be done. And so all those costs are also built into, and can be found as a line item in each of those cost estimates.
So ultimately, this is a final package?
This is a turnkey cost. Everything associated with the project, the site, drainage, furniture tables, desks, chairs, everything, the way the MSBA wants you to structure this budget, so that there are no surprises, is everything's in there. All costs associated with this project is in there.
Would this include, you mentioned fields, that includes the field of fields?
It does. The 96.4 million includes the development of all those fields, all the drainage associated with those fields, and the parking lots, et cetera. It includes the synthetic turf field surface on the two multipurpose fields in the rear. Everything that we've talked about included in the 96.4 million.
If it wouldn't include things such as like the technology in the classrooms, though, would it?
It does. It does, actually. It includes computers, laptops, desktops, servers, wireless access points, all the technology in the building. There's certainly a budget for that, so it doesn't include the ability to just buy unlimited quantities of those. But what we've done is we've taken the MSBA's recommended expenditure there, and blended it with our past project experience to plug in a budget into your total project budget, which we believe leaves you the funding to outfit all the classrooms. So you're talking about smartboards, LCD projectors, as I said, laptops, desktops, all of those components are part of the 96.4 million.
And furniture for the building also?
All the furniture for the building also.
Maury?
Could you also speak to the estimated student population for each of the schools? What are we estimating?
Yes. The projections, you know, I may ask, I may ask Mary, who's your owner's project manager, to help me out with the adjusted projections for the combined buildings and then the separate populations.
The combined building is 1,115. And those aren't necessarily projections on your maximum enrollment. What MSBA does is they take an examination of your community, your projected par rates, any major developments that you may have planned in the next 20 years, and then they give you a projection on the enrollments, that they feel there's a healthy, safe value without overbuilding. And what they want to avoid doing is, what has happened in the past, is they build to maximum enrollment, and then there's a birth decline, or there is some decline in enrollment in the school district, and then they have too much capacity. So they've done a very good job over time in developing their calculation. They have more information on the website with regard to how they come about that calculation. I believe that the, that the high school was 1,150 enrollment. There were various values.
I think it's 670 and 480 roughly. Middle school is 6...
650, 465.
650, 465, Troy tells me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Without stepping on any of the other board's toes, does anybody in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask Scott? Okay. So what's the next plot of action? Oh, yeah, no, just got to ask him a question.
I, just to follow up on the contingency and the escalation allowance, that goes into the base construction, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So what are the controls put in place as far as, you know, funding coming out of that source? As far as making sure you use, you know, it's a contingency in case something else happens. So what are the controls we place to make, you know, that we don't decide to do something else that, you know, with that one? Because it's really a reserve we've set up.
Right. There are several contingencies, and I'll speak to each one. The design and estimating contingency is assumed, is part of the base construction cost that you described.
That's the 5%.
Yes. And one estimator carried that at 5%. One estimator carried it at 8%. Different estimators have different theories on those things. But essentially, that money, whether it's in the 5%, the 5% in one of the estimates or 8% in the other, that money is assumed ultimately to be dedicated to the construction cost. Because the assumption there is, as we continue to design the building, there will be things that we couldn't be identified in this early stage, that will be identified over the next year or so as the building is being designed, and will ultimately absorb that design and estimating contingency. So that is assumed. It's assumed that that cost that is identified as the base construction cost will ultimately be your target cost when we go out to bid to general contractors on the project. Now, separate from that, there's an owner's contingency and a construction contingency. And those are the two contingencies that is, it is assumed that you would not necessarily spend unless you run into a specific need for those. And in terms of the way, the controls that get placed on those, the only way that the owner's contingency and the construction contingency can be expended is through individual line items approved by the building committee. And certainly, as a town, you can put whatever approval process you want in place. But those amounts can only be expended if they are approved through the building committee. And every one of them has to go through the building committee, through the town process, and then through the MSBA for auditing. So everything that you were to try to spend, or need to spend, out of those contingencies, and again, I'm talking about the construction contingency or the owner's contingency, would have to go all the way through that process. And the reason it goes through the MSBA process is multifold. Number one, they want to make sure you're being a good steward of that contingency. And number two, every single item that you expend out of that contingency, they want to determine if they're going to participate in reimbursing it or not. So they have a very comprehensive auditing process, because every single month that you spend money on this project, they'll audit all of your expenses, and then give you a reimbursement payment for the part that they're participating in.
So if you're going to use the contingency, say that 5%, does that, any time you take funds from that, that has to approve prior to any expenditure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
To this point in time, again, this is more for people watching, but can you explain how much money we give actually appropriated, and how much has been expended to get to this point, as far as the schematic design process?
Yes. I know fairly closely, but I think Mary, as your owner's project manager, yeah, would probably know in more detail, because she has to update the committee monthly on the exact expenditures.
Before Mary talks, I'm sorry, can the mic, can you guys pick her up? No, she has to go to, you go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Mary Mahoney. I'm with KBA. We're the owner's project manager for the project. The original appropriation for the feasibility study and the schematic design was $800,000. Through contracts with our office and with the designer, some extra services for a site survey, geotechnical work, and some boring works that were, boring work and traffic studies that were done, we are tracking slightly below the original appropriation. We currently have a surplus on the appropriation of a little over $26,000. So at this phase, although we're still showing the $800,000 encumbrance that was provided for that study, we are tracking below that budget. And what MSBA will do as part of the project is that they will roll those funds into the full project. full project so that when you go forward in your vote this fall, hopefully if the town approves the project, that will be a complete package. It'll include the original feasibility study, the schematic design, full design development, construction, closeout, furniture, technology, et cetera. So you will have that one budget of 96,400, and it'll include all phases of the project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
This is it. Again, this is not, everybody here has heard all this.
No, good question.
But I think it's for the benefit of the people at home. And I think one thing, everybody knows that this is going to cost the town people and taxpayers some money. So this is more to Rick. Based upon where we stand now with this final figure, can you just let people know what the estimated impact is going to be on their property tax bill? It was estimated at $600. Has that changed as far as the average?
To my knowledge, it has not changed. I will also say that I was not prepared to answer that specific question, but based upon the cost estimation that has been provided and has been provided to the committee, that has not changed. The original estimates are still on target.
I just don't want people to get stick a sharp. Right. Thank you. Scott, you mentioned a traffic study. Does that play into your aspect? I mean, I've heard rumblings, rumors, whatever you want to talk about, but there has to be a second way out other than, or is there others? I mean, is there any extra role work that has to be done around the site? I guess is what I'm asking.
The traffic study did not identify the need for a second exit out of the site. Certainly, the building committee has asked us to study various opportunities if we could in fact find one, and the police and fire officials have asked us if we could continue to keep an open mind with regard to there possibly being one. The traffic study did not identify a requirement for one. It made some recommendations regarding the intersection at Route 18 and some other things along Glen Owitz Way, but it didn't make any, didn't suggest any specific need for that.
So that's something that would not come into MSBA's?
No.
If everything went according to plan, when would the doors of the new school open?
The new building would be completed in the fall of 2017. Because of the timing, it wouldn't be, if it was completed in the summer, we would say it's a fall of 2017 occupancy. It's more likely a fall of 2017 completion and a potential mid-year move, which is often done into the, meaning the middle of the school year, move into the new facility.
And that would be before the demolition of the old place?
That is correct. And then the phasing would be structured such that the new building was completely finished. It's an important question because sometimes you get a portion of the new building done and you start demolishing the old building because you don't have room to construct the new building, et cetera. In this particular proposal, the new building would be 100% complete, furnished, all technology in place, move-in ready. Students would go into the new building, and then you would start the demolition of the existing building.
So there isn't a possibility that the middle school could go, middle school children could go there while the high school is still there, the old high school?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Well, if the building's ready to go and the old high school is still there, is a possibility that they could phase it in so the middle school children go to that school and the high school kids stay in the old school until?
Well, the new building, the middle school and the high school at the new building, the newly proposed middle school and high school, would both likely be completed simultaneously and would be 100% complete somewhere in kind of an October-November timeframe in 2017. So essentially, with a little bit of time to furnish them, because it takes time to deploy the new furniture, the new technology, the middle school and the new middle school and the new high school would likely be ready, wouldn't be ready for occupancy until that holiday transition, until that, you know, December-January transition period.
Okay. Just to follow up, and then how long would it take to take down the high school?
Not long. It'll come down quickly.
And to have the whole project filled and everything completed?
Yeah. The new high school would come down, would be demolished.
A new high school.
I'm sorry. The existing high school would be demolished and completely removed from the site in about four to six months would be typical. Then it will probably be, typically on a project that's phased like this, we don't begin any of the actual field work until the spring of that time period after the demolition. So in an ideal world, you would start demolishing the existing high school, and that demolition would take place on kind of a January, February, March, April timeframe, such that when the spring rolled in in 2018, you could start the field work and then have those fields completed, maybe not ready to play on, but completed by the end of the summer in 2018. Now, the two synthetic turf fields that we're proposing at the rear of the site, we have talked many times about the fact that we may break those out as an early phase of the project so that they're finished within, let's say, the first six months or so of the project, and so that the town would have those available for use because you're going to lose some fields as a result of, all the fields back there as a result of new construction going on. So the phasing plan that we would propose to develop for the project, which would be developed should the town decide to move forward with this, town meeting and debt, through town meeting and debt exclusion vote, would be developed in a way to try to get you use of those synthetic turf fields during all of the, essentially all the duration of construction.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions? Who's raising their hand? Okay, are we ready to vote, boards?
I am.
I believe all three boards have to take this vote if I'm correct. Is that correct?
All, we require, the MSBA requires a roll call vote of all three boards.
Would you like to go first?
Somebody needs to make, be one motion for all three committees, or does each committee have to make their own separate motion? Mary, can we make one motion?
For all three?
Separate motion? Okay.
Want me to read the motion so it's out there? Vote to approve and authorize the OPM, which is the owner's project manager, to submit the schematic design-related submittals for the Frollo School Project, a co-located grade five through 12 middle school and high school with pre-kindergarten to the MSBA for consideration. That is the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board of selectmen? All in favor?
Aye.
Do it by roll call.
Roll call, okay. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. You folks want to go next?
Make the motion for the school committee.
Second. By roll call?
Yes.
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 We have to read the motion again.
Okay.
Read the motion again. So the vote was to approve and authorize the OPM to submit the schematic design-related submittals for the Frollo School Project, a co-located grade five through 12 middle school and high school with pre-kindergarten to the MSBA for consideration.
Okay.
All right. The school building committee would like to make a motion to, where are we here? Do you need it? Authorize and approve the OPM to submit the schematic design-related submittals for the Frollo School Project, the co-located grade five through 12 middle high school with pre-K to the MSBA for consideration. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
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 Well, you guys get to vote twice. Okay, is that all we need to do? That's it.
Good job.
I'd like to thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Well thought out proposal.
Yeah, you folks want to vote to adjourn?
So...
Let me do this. We're going to take a brief, two or three minute pause, let the room clear out if you guys want to stay, and then you're going to, you want to take a vote?
We need to take a vote. Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Nice face to look across. It's a nice face to look across.
We had a town meeting on a Proposition Two and a half override, and we also had a town meeting on, I was moderator for the airbase. And the one for the override, I don't remember what the estimate was, but I do know that the bleachers were absolutely full, and so wasn't the whole seating area. The check-in that time was a problem to a degree, but it wasn't a big problem. I think, I think I did not start the meeting until the people were in the hall. And I think we started about 7:20, 7:30 maybe, because I didn't think it was fair, nor did anybody that's waiting in line to get in, we really can't start the meeting until they showed up. And since we've done that, I think, and you might have been involved with this, we did ask for volunteers on a couple of things, and we did get people that came and assisted to check it in. And that process seemed to go fairly well. I do agree that getting that many people in and comfortably seated and stuff is going to be a problem. I mean, my thought as you were speaking is you couldn't do part of it like down the hall in the gym, you couldn't have the people walk down one side and then turn around and come back. Are they going to be sitting in the cafeteria? Is that the final thing?
We're hoping that.
Do we know?
One of the concerns people at home have to understand, and I mean, speaking for Leanne, but some people say, oh, why don't you check in people at the gym, and you can check in people at the cafeteria? But you can't do that, because you can't have Mike Franny check in at the gym, and then an imposter Mike Franny check in at the cafeteria.
How do they know it's not going to be an imposter anyways?
I'm sorry?
How do they know it's not an imposter anyway? You don't, I mean, there's no real, it's all like an honor system in our town.
True, but it's one set of books, so one check-in point. I know Norton, we talked, Norton had tried to set up multiple check-in points with laptops, and during the check-in process, it crashed, and that stopped everything.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but I mean, all right, go ahead.
So, that was one of the concerns, is if we have the check-in up at the gym, and we're going to have to tell some people, take the walk down to the cafeteria, but that's what we're handed with, or walk out to the tent, whatever it is. Someone's going to have to walk, people are going to walk a long distance from their parking of their cars, too.
Well, I mean, and I don't know how you're going to control that, because people could walk in on the cafeteria side and just walk in and be seated, period.
Well, that's our concern with the-
So, do you lock the cafeteria?
We'd have to have police officers down the area. That's part of the concern with separating people that much, and that's why we looked at the tent being adjacent to the gym. We have a lot more control.
So, go back to my original thought, my thought, but just to throw everything out there. Why couldn't you have tables in that corridor leading to the gym, where you could check people in? If you want to go, be checked in at this one, you can go to the gym, or you can go to the cafeteria down that way, and you'd have two check-ins. Follow what I'm saying, or no?
Yeah, I do. There's potential for everything. I mean, keep in mind, though, that the main entrance to the high school is pretty much going to be off limits, because it's not ADA compatible. Everyone would pretty much come in the gym, or come in the cafeteria. And remember, they're at different elevations, too, but there are ramps.
There's a ramp. That should be eight, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that's ADA compliant.
It is ADA compliant, once you're in the building, if you go through either one of those two doors at either end of the building.
Okay.
Everybody's used to going into the gym, though.
I'm just trying to help, I'm just throwing something out, I'm not trying to be negative on this.
And everybody's used to entering that way.
True.
And it's just to keep it-
If we're expecting a crowd of fifteen hundred people, most of those people have never been to a town meeting anyways. I mean, we get to one hundred and fifty people.
True, but if they, my thought, if they see the circus tent, you know, the tent, they're going to go to that area, and the tables are going to be set up, and there's going to be precinct signs, and it's going to flow.
There's no doubt it's going to be a special town meeting, and Andy makes a good point, we're assuming, probably eighty percent of the people who are going to attend this meeting is probably going to be the first. So, everyone's going to have to learn, even the people who've been there, it's going to be a different setup. Everyone's going to have to learn what to do.
I think we're going to have to have some patience and-
Right, and we're going to try to educate the public, once decisions are made, we'll try to make it as fluid and efficient as possible.
And there will be volunteers all around, like, if we do have the tent, we go with that approach, there's, I'm going to have a lot of volunteers out there, so that people can ask what precinct, what line, and just-
The signage is very important, I remember that, one of the things, the signage is very, very important to have, the list of what street you are, what precinct you are. Sometimes, I notice they're too, they're in too far. If we could, any way we could have them posted outside.
Well, I'm going to have the volunteers holding them. Just have a printout of the resident listing book.
Okay.
We were contemplating, no matter where this happens, is that there would be, we've been calling them cruise directors, our volunteers helping, stopping the line before you get to the voter check-in desks. And they would allow twenty people to go to the desks at a time or so to check in, so we're not overwhelming the tables, and people are kind of jostling each other. It would let the flow go pretty orderly, so the check-in keeps moving.
What's your expectation? Well, you sort of figure out there before, sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred?
Well, we just, we've been talking to other towns. West Bridgewater just had a vote recently, and they have forty-seven hundred registered voters, they had nine hundred and fifty at town meeting. We have ten thousand registered voters. It's not really fair to say, so let's double it for Abington, but it could. Hampton recently had a meeting with eleven or twelve hundred voters. East Bridgewater, they estimated that was about fifteen hundred. And I've called, talked to the Rockland moderator and the East Bridgewater moderator, and said, where did you do it? And as I mentioned earlier, most of those towns were voting in schools that already had auditoriums and gymnasiums, so they had the overflow capacity, and, you know, it was kind of already set up for that. Abington's one of the only towns, I think, that doesn't have an auditorium, so we have to adjust and make it work for us.
Right.
We do have, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so what you're proposing is a tent out in front for the check-in, then the gym, and then a tent out in back, potentially for overflow.
Correct.
Yeah, the front tent would be like a forty-foot wide tent, where-
Yeah, just to check in.
Yeah, it would be, so that we have a controlled check-in area. No one else, no one gets into the gym unless you get through that check-in point.
And in the tent in the back is where you would have video monitors, sound, et cetera.
Right, both, both meeting areas need to be able to hear each other. We'd have a separate moderator out there, we'd be on walkie-talkies, all the towns have done this and telling us it's, you have to-
Separate moderator?
Yeah, the deputy moderator would be out there.
Well, even just to count the votes.
Yeah, we have counters, you know, tellers in both sections. Most towns, even though the law only requires an audio connection, that each group can hear the other and also speak to the other, most towns also set up a video feed, so that if we're in the gym, and someone at the tent is now speaking, it comes up on the screen in the gym, so we can all see who's talking, and vice versa, they can see. So, everyone feels that they are an equal part of the meeting. That requires, obviously, us to retain services.
Do you have a cost on the tent? Is that something we have to-
Yeah, I got an estimate today, and this is just ballpacking, we said a forty-foot tent, forty-foot wide tent, and if we asked them to give us a tent with six hundred chairs in it, that was like nine thousand dollars total for setup. We may not need-
And that's not even audio visual?
No, that does not include the audio visual, and I can give you an update on that also. The, I did talk to Mr. DeCarlo, who is on the Abington Cam Corporation, and asked if they would be able to help fund the town's cost for providing the audio visual services. He's away on vacation, or he'd be here right now, and he intimated immediately, he thought it would be justified, because it's providing a service to tape a public meeting to display to the town. It would just have to go through the board of directors' vote.
And when would that be?
That I don't know. I'm not even sure who's on that committee.
Okay. But he indicated that he could help, I mean, I-
Yeah, he would support, and thought there was a reasonable nexus there, that those funds would be available.
Funds for the audio visual?
The audio visual. The tent issue, no, remember, we shot high, we shot for renting six hundred chairs and a sixty-by-one-hundred-foot pole tent, to be, all to be set up, you know, broken down and all.
And what was the cost on that again?
I have an estimate here, a total of eighty-nine hundred dollars. It's basically forty-five hundred dollars for the large tent, twenty-three for the smaller tent, and then the chairs, basically, are two dollars each to be set up and delivered and all.
And that's going to hold six hundred additional people, correct?
Well, yes, but that was also before we found that we could add three hundred chairs in the gym. So, if the board of selectmen were to recommend, hey, let's put three hundred chairs in the gym, and let's just put three hundred chairs or four hundred chairs outside, that depends on what we want to do. I think, you know, once we determine the location and the time, then that stuff might start to fall into place.
If, if you're already planning on having a separate moderator, a separate area, you know, two separate moderators, or whatever, wouldn't it, I know you're saying it's the other end of the hall, but wouldn't the cafeteria and, like, for a third option, the Smith Room, be better options than buying a tent and setting it up? I mean, because you're going to, I mean, you say wire, I don't think you really have to run wire, I mean, they must have wireless, you know, micro, you know, connections for the audio and video, I would think that that would be a better option.
That would be nice if they do, I don't know that for a fact, because we haven't gone that far. And the seating capacity in the gym, I believe, was four hundred, and the Paul K. Smith Room, which is on the second floor, is two hundred and fifty. Yeah, that's always an option. It makes the check-in process a little trickier, we have to figure a way to do that.
What if you separated the precincts? You know, you had two precincts that were down in the gym, and three precincts that were in, well, three precincts in the gym, and two precincts down in the cafeteria.
I don't know if we can do that, but it's always a thought.
But then, if you come up, and the crowd's only eight hundred, then it's like, then it's, you know-
Yeah, it's set up.
Well, there's the rub, is we have to plan for the worst, you have to plan for the overflow, because the, to not plan and to have an overflow is a crisis, because now we have to stop the town meeting. I hate, I'm not trying to spend money-
Right, I understand, but this is another situation, oh, sorry.
Just a question on the overflow. If you had a question, would you ask it, like, if you were in the cafeteria, or would, could you walk down and go to the podium of the main thing and ask the question, instead of doing a lot of rigmarole? Because that's always been a custom, so to speak.
The law says they have to be wired, so that they can ask a question from the meeting room, and they can hear the question in the meeting room. If someone, you know, could someone say, I want to walk all the way down there? Yeah, we can't, I guess we can't stop them from doing that, but they're supposed to be able to sit in a seat, listen to everything that's going on, and ask a question from where they are.
Okay. Andy?
There is another option, we can go outside of town, we do have the ability to do that.
Yep, it's the selectmen's determination where we have the meeting.
Well, have you, I mean, what would you think Massa Sway is?
Well, Tom had mentioned Massa Sway, I called Massa Sway today, but I was thinking the conference center. Tom had suggested the gymnasium, which is enormous.
The conference center is-
No, the conference center only holds six hundred and fifty people, I called today to ask.
Really?
But the gymnasium is huge.
Huge.
My concern with that, though, is the seniors.
Over there tomorrow and just see what the capacity is.
The seniors in town, that would be extremely difficult, transporting everybody over. If we went out of town for seniors, suggesting to them, you know, instead of going five or ten minutes?
Yeah, I think no matter how we handle this, we're going to irk somebody with-
There is no perfect answer, there is absolutely no perfect answer, we're just trying to dig up as much information and look at the pros and cons, so that at least when we make the decision, it's as well thought out as we could be.
Well, you know, it would help us if, and I don't blame Henry, but if Henry could give us some information of what he would be willing to help us with, would probably help us make the decision, but-
Well, I think, when I talk to him, I think those funds for cable TV access would be limited to just the cable TV, you know, the audio visual services. He doesn't think that you can justify them renting the tent, let's say?
No.
Okay, because it's not related to cable TV.
Got to protect the equipment.
You can make that argument, I'm not going to stop anyone from making that argument.
They have money for that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the board would do it, and I don't know.
You know, as I understand that fee, I think of my cable bill, I pay almost four dollars a month, and so does everybody else here that has cable, but I realize that, but that goes towards that grant in our town, so. And there is a board and whatever, I mean, they might look favorably on that, that's what I mean, it would be nice.
They are limited, though, Mike, in what they can spend their money on, they have to be careful, that they're a nonprofit.
No, 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 true, I understand that.
The IG's office, so they have to be careful.
No harm in asking.
But just in the interest of other, other funding sources, if we investigated the, I heard tonight that we still have twenty-six thousand in the feasibility study article, can any of that money be allocated to these special town meeting expenses?
We did ask town council to look at that, and the building committee, and the way the article was voted, were not authorized to use that money at this time for those expenses. However, as I understand it, and I'd rather, maybe the town manager can speak to it, there was another thought of how to maybe get it done, and that was the reserve fund transfer, and then having a town meeting article to transfer the money out of the feasibility study article, and putting it back into the reserve fund. At, you know, sometime in the spring, you could do that.
Creative.
I thought reserve fund was for emergencies, though.
Unexpected, unexpected expenses.
Isn't this unexpected?
We knew it was coming for the last few years, yeah.
I just, I don't think it's budgeted, though.
Yeah, it is, no.
Maureen?
As far as, like, wiring and that type of thing, I mean, I don't know how many of us work, but, I mean, there are conference calls and WebEx, and, you know, Adobe Connect things, it's not that difficult to do, you just do it over the web. So, it's a matter of just getting two locations, again, I know you have to check people in, but you log into a WebEx, put it up on a big screen, it's not that difficult to do.
Yeah, the estimate we got from a company that does Concord's town meetings pretty regularly, and I think I forwarded that to some of you, was, I want to say it was three to five thousand for each room, depending on what it was, and I think, obviously, if we go to that third room, the Paul K. Smith Room, increase the cost, so we'd have to weigh the balance of that.
I think we're going to solve it tonight.
No, but I think we have to talk about it.
Tom?
Just maybe shifting gears a little bit, the MSBA vote is scheduled for September twenty-fourth. On the timelines here, we have to schedule a special town meeting, and then the exclusion, dead exclusion vote. Has there been any talk about the optimum time? And again, if, to me, if we come up at the high school, you know, you've got soccer going to X State, and to me, that could be an issue. Is there a time when that traffic?
Yes, we have one hundred and twenty days from September twenty-fourth to hold both a special town meeting as well as a ballot vote. We, the school building committee has had extensive discussions, and we had proposed to, not proposed, but asked for consideration for October. The reason being is, the fear is, as we start to move away from that vote, and start to head into November or December, that, you know, certainly the committee will start to lose momentum. When you get into the holidays, it's going to be much more difficult to get people to come out and take action. The other, the other potential reason, and, you know, we hope that this wouldn't be the case, but if we were to be unsuccessful at either a town meeting or at a ballot, we do have the opportunity to take a second vote, as long as it's still taken within that one hundred and twenty days. So, we certainly don't want to even consider that that potentially, you know, would happen, but we do want to give ourselves enough time that should something happen, that we would still be able to potentially consider that as an option within the one hundred and twenty day timeframe.
Something happened here at the MSBA level, or?
No, if we, if it, for instance, if it didn't pass a town meeting, we could potentially have another town meeting within that one hundred and twenty days. If we had that vote on the one hundred and tenth day, that wouldn't provide us any subsequent time to consider a second.
But even though it got voted down, you'd, you know-
Yeah, some towns have taken the second vote.
I would, that would be at the, you know, within the purview of the-
The other concern was, in talking to our architects, was if we get the town's votes approved in October, that would dictate the likelihood that we would start construction in the following October, and finish in the next, well, two years later, in October, November. Whereas if we push the votes into November, December, then you're pushing construction into November, December, and we want to try to get in the ground, get the foundation before winter, so it doesn't delay the project. That was one of the big concerns, really, that the architects had, and the project managers, to try to, that scenario that they described earlier about potentially having the school done, so we could have the January first switch over, that's assuming October votes.
But I guess my question is, whatever date it is in October, would you basically cancel soccer, or any activities up here in the high school level?
We, yeah.
No, you can't do it per se, but I mean, would that be-
Correct, so if, if it were a, if we were to have a Saturday town meeting, as an example, the sooner we could get that date out to any of those local, you know, youth soccer, anything like that, and provide them that date, so that they could make arrangements, if in fact, they were to determine that it was important enough to cancel soccer on that Saturday. So, the further advanced notice we can provide them, the better. Also, and, you know, if we, in speaking with Leo, obviously, the sooner that we, if the town were to vote to do this, the sooner that vote takes place, the sooner we can go out and procure bond funding. And right now, rates are at historically low levels, you know, a difference of a couple months, depending upon the Fed meeting schedule, could have a significant impact on the cost.
That is a good point, I think the Fed's starting to pull back on keeping interest rates low to some degree.
Yeah, there definitely, there's some quantitative easing taking place.
The other question is, what's your committee position as far as from the, assuming we get a, there's a favorable special town meeting vote, what kind of a timeframe between that when you go to the ballot box?
We looked at a number of the surrounding communities, most recently, that took votes, so Rockland, East Bridgewater, Hanover, as well as Duxbury, and all of which have taken play, all of which have taken the votes as short as five days from the town meeting, to as far as it is eleven days. Everyone's been within, under a two-week timeframe of recent that we've spoken with.
So, one to two weeks in effect?
Correct.
East Bridgewater was five days, Duxbury was seven days, Hanover was eight days, and Rockland was eleven days.
Advantages, pros and cons to each one?
Yeah, we, ideally, we want to keep it as close as possible, you know, that will obviously, you know, we want to keep it top of mind with people, you know, the ideology behind, you know, a potential Saturday town meeting, and then Saturday vote, or even, you know, within ten days of one another. You're going to keep it top of mind with people, you know, obviously, as, you know, we had alluded to, there's going to be a number of people that are not familiar with this political process, and the more engaged we can keep the general public, the better. And we think by keeping the timeframes short in scope, the greater the opportunity is for us to keep the general public engaged in the process.
Are there rules that govern how much time you have to give people notice? I mean, because we have to have town, we have to give notice for town meeting, I'm assuming, and you have to notice for the ballot, getting the ballot together, Leanne?
Oh, I get it, turn. So, for-
Putting the ballot together and all that, if you can-
They can put the ballot together very quickly. My concern with the ballot is, I want to be sure, we have absentee voting, and I want to be sure that everyone has enough time to do that, to apply, to come in, have it mailed out. So, the, for a special town meeting, it would be fourteen days for the warrant, and the election would be seven.
Fourteen days to call a town meeting?
Before.
To send the warrant out.
To send the warrant, which is, yeah.
What, seven for a town meeting?
For an election.
For an election.
For election.
Because, well, it'll be done separately.
You could directly call the election before the actual vote, that seems, it must have been on that town, because they had five days.
Yeah, it's normally done on the same warrant, like we've done with our regular town elections, it's in the town meeting warrant.
Just to your point, as far as absentee balloting, how would that take place if we don't know if it passes that town meeting, and then five days later, you have a, an election? When are those people going to be able to get absentee ballots?
Ideally?
Yes?
The vote will be the twenty-fourth, and-
It must be able.
Yes, so that date would be on the twenty-fourth. If you, the next time that the board of selectmen meet, if you will be able to announce that we're having the election in the meeting, then I can go ahead and do it.
They're going to vote before the town meeting?
Yes. They would vote, I'd be mailing them out, we'd be going through all of that, and if it doesn't work, doesn't-
So, there's been occasion where some towns have had the ballot election before the town meeting?
Yes.
Most do the town meeting first.
Mike? Just to go back, what do you typically, you're saying you're going to mail the ballots out before we even have the town meeting?
Yes.
Because you typically give them how much time for, you have a set time?
It would be nice to give them a month.
A month?
Yes. I think the more time we have available to them-
What's the shortest time you've given, or, you know, historically?
That I don't know.
Is it a month?
So, I guess it comes down to, we have to pick the day of the week we want to have this town meeting, whether it's a regular Monday night, or any other night of the week, or Saturday, the date and the place. Now, if the board's prepared to make any of those choices tonight, you know, feel free to chime in, if they want more time for the whole decision, or if they want any part of it tonight.
I think, my personal opinion, I'd rather find out the place first, make sure that that's secure.
I didn't say I didn't make them that order, but I'm just saying, those three decisions that have to be-
Right, but this is my feeling, I think you need to know where you're going to have it first, and then you can call the town meeting and the election. But I think we have to get a little more detail on some of this.
But I also feel that if we decide to have it at the high school, we can make it happen, we will make it happen.
Yes.
I mean, it's gone, wherever we decide, you know, whether it's Beaver Brook or the high school, it will happen, you just have, you have to get it done.
And I feel the high school's a better choice, as for, definitely on a Saturday, it would be so much easier for everybody.
You recommend the Saturday also?
Very much, yes.
That's what most people, I mean, there have been some very large town meetings at that high school. I mean, we're assuming, there's going to be a lot, no doubt, there's going to be a lot of people for a town meeting, but a lot of people might be their second or third town meeting, you know what I mean? It's just, I would say the high school, but that's, again, this committee has done so much work, it must feel compelled for you to tell us what to do. I mean, you've done an outstanding job, so it's a little bit, you know, we want to work with you, for sure, but-
Yeah, I just feel the high school is where people are familiar with going to town meeting. I think there's some logistical issues, but it sounds like you've thought through some of those, that, you know, we can overcome those. One silly question I have is, by law, do you have to register people by precinct? Because, again, I just think of, you know, from a business sense, and I think everybody's been to conferences before, and typically, they have, you know, stations, but it's organized by last name. So, here's A and B, here's C and D, okay, C and D, Dionne, I go right here, you know, Coyle, he goes, I mean, no.
I go before you?
No, you go before, but I'm wondering if that is something that might ease the, you know, registration process? Because I find, and I've done it before, right, people are so confused coming in, what precinct am I in? And again, I think we've only been in, what, two years now, or is it three, with the five precincts?
Mm-hmm.
And especially in the middle there, where there are five, there used to be four or three, but I don't, it's just a thought, that it may ease things. And again, I've been to some large conferences, and it just, it's intuitive, where are you going to go? You just find the station where your last name is, and you go, and you register.
And with that in mind, that is why I will have volunteers and extra cruise directors, as we're calling them.
Yeah.
I could maybe even put something in the paper, in the local paper, we could put something on cable, with the person's listed book, because that says everything right there.
Would it be possible, I mean, everybody in, everybody in town is going to get a card mailed to them, correct?
For the town meeting.
For the town meeting? Would it be possible on there, on the front or the back, say you are in precinct, because they're going to be, the addresses are going to be on there, you just say, you are in precinct three, you're in precinct two?
It's about bulk mailing.
Right. They'd be put on a label, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, have it printed on, oh.
It's done, not by precinct, the bulk mail is done.
No, but, the bulk mail, is it stamped with the address? No, but, the bulk mail, is it stamped with the address?
Yes.
Is it, is it...
Resident, yeah, resident.
Right. Oh, it just says resident?
It says resident. The bulk mail doesn't coincide with the precinct.
But under it's going to say, eleven oh six Washington Street, then you could add another line, precinct five, something like that. Just an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, it's just that it...
That's enough. I just like the good idea button.
I'll quit while I'm at it.
You don't do the printing that goes to the printer and the printer puts the address on there.
Exactly. And they do it through their...
Does the town manager have any, any feelings on this recommendation, or any thing that you can add?
The short answer is no. I think the, the issues, you know, outlined by, by the town clerk and moderator, you know, are the same issues you've been dealing. I know some of you are on the school, on that committee, and I, I think the, the fundamental question is, how do you get the best, the most representation by the town? Where do you do that? And I, and I, my feeling is, is that going out of town, the boundaries of Abington is going, you're going, your attendance is going to suffer. That's just a, you know, and so to me, the question is, where's the best location in Abington? And I think the high school, we had thought that Beaver Brook was going to be that place. Unfortunately, I mean, it looks like the high school is shaping up to be the most obvious location after all, so, so, again, I, I don't know what else I can provide. I think to some extent, it's a, it's a matter of trying to bring some political wisdom and say, what's going to get the best representation from the voting, voting public?
I, I do have a question, Rick. As far as the expense for this, where is, where is that going to be, where are those funds going to be coming from?
That doesn't exist, other than in the reserve fund at the moment.
How much do we have in the reserve fund?
Twenty thousand dollars is what was appropriated. So it would have to be replenished later in the fiscal year.
Tom?
So I, I don't know, just one member's opinion, I, I would move that we basically establish the venue for the special town meeting at the high school. And I guess the second piece of that would be to establish that Saturdays would be the date.
I do have some lovely bullet points for Saturday, if I could read them. I do have some really nice bullet points for Saturday.
In favor of Saturday?
Yes.
Well, you get the vote, Leanne, so, I mean, you can read them. I think you do, I don't know.
Well, if you're feeling good about the Saturday, I'll spare myself.
There's two of us.
Okay, that's two of us.
Keep going.
So is a motion seconded, seconded to have a, at the high school on a Saturday? On a Saturday.
Want to say which Saturday, or?
Well, let's do this first, and then we can lobby for which Saturday.
So a motion made and seconded, any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No.
No?
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned, first off, I'd like to know which Saturday you're talking about. I mean, you're talking on Saturday.
That's the next vote.
Well, we'll give you a chance to revote, yes, later on. Four to one vote.
Well, not necessarily, I, I might want to look at a Monday or Tuesday opposed to that. I mean, does that allow us to do that?
Let's let Leanne tell us why Saturday works.
That's fine, go ahead.
Thanks for that, Mike. Saturday, a lot of really good reasons. Childcare is something I feel that would be very important. In choosing a Saturday, if mom or dad needed to stay home, that's an option. If he needed a babysitter, that's an option. They're easier to find on a Saturday. It would be safer for senior citizens in town, again, if we added the high school because of the location of that. Parents would not be, or citizens wouldn't be rushing from work to come and vote. On a Saturday, I would also like to throw this out, that maybe we could shorten the hours of the election a little bit, and there would be some cost savings to that, a little bit, but that is left to you to decide.
The town meeting, right?
The meeting, for the meeting, yes, for the meeting. Doing this on a Saturday during the daylight hours would make it a lot easier for drivers and pedestrians, everybody to read the signs. If we have volunteers out directing people which way to go, it really would be nice to be able to see them, and you could do that on a Saturday. Who else do I have here?
Saturday doesn't affect the kids in school either.
Correct.
You know, you can set up all the equipment and everything Friday night.
Yeah, I think that's a big concern, especially if you're talking about tents and things. If you're going to have tents set up and audiovisual equipment, it'd be hard to do it on a, a week, like...
We spoke with them, they would probably do that on the Friday before.
We don't know if we're going to have tents.
But, yeah, I agree with Sean, you got to plan for the biggest, and see what, so that has to be part of the consideration.
Then we should have it at the proio.
Field.
For the big town.
I think, I think the board's aware, we, we even looked at what time sunset is in mid-October, and it's, well, six o'clock, the sun will be down in mid-October. So if we had an evening night, an evening meeting, we'd be parking and walking in the dark both before and after the meeting. Was a concern with the amount of crowds. I talked to the fire chief, when we were initially talking about going to Beaver Brook, he thought, obviously, a daylight meeting on a Saturday would be a lot safer. People were crossing the street, whether it be Washington Street in that case, or just Glen Owits Way in, in this case, in Abington, I. So there was...
And I think on a Saturday, a lot of families are already out going to their sports activities or events. Just be nice and easy, come over to the high school, do your civic duty, and...
There is, there will be an issue with the soccer, so if, if that's the case, then...
Well, our goal, Lea, Lea and I...
Push her out of the way, you want to.
I know.
No, no, Leanne and I had talked, we've been trying to coordinate the vest, and if the board were to consider a Saturday meeting, a Saturday morning meeting, whether it start at nine or ten, I can't imagine this meeting's going to go more than two hours. We should be done by noon time.
You were only supposed to be here for fifteen minutes.
You know, so at that point, we could ask youth soccer, youth lacrosse and all to cancel all the morning games, if they want to start something up at one o'clock. I think that's very realistic and not a conflict.
Because parking would be a nightmare.
Exactly. We need every parking space. We would have the overflow of town on the library if we are at the high school, which is another thing we discussed today. So just those things, really for safety, you know, it's tough for some older drivers to drive at night if we had an evening meeting. We mentioned, it's a school night, so parents are going to have their school kids at home if it's a weekday evening meeting, whereas a week, a weekend, there's more high school kids available to, you know, potentially be babysitters or watch the children.
And to volunteer their time.
Okay, does, does that change your opinion in mind? You want to revote this, or you're all set?
I haven't decided.
Okay, good enough. So we're meeting Saturday at the high school. Tom?
I'd like to just discuss dates and maybe potentially set a date. And again, I, I think for me, just if, if we're going to be shifting things around, you know, whether it's youth soccer, or library, or whatever, I think the earlier you do that, it's better for those organizations, so they can plan for it. So I don't know, Maureen's got a calendar, I don't know.
How do you feel about October eighteenth and the twenty-fifth?
Just, just so you know, now, now you're impinging on two soccer dates, because the town election is going to be held at the high school also, and parking is going to be very difficult if we have the town election on Saturday following.
And I did want to shorten the hours for the election, if you allowed that to happen.
I'm not a big fan of that.
Of short, of shortening the hours?
About the election, though, because it kind of falls into the dates. Can the election be held at the November election? I mean, we have a September primary, it looks like we're talking about an October election, and then we're talking about a November election. I mean...
We're going to be busy in the question.
Absolutely. Is it possible, or legal, or fall in the timeframe, or the scope of this MSBA, whatever it's called, to have the meeting for the vote on a regular election date?
They needed to have, well, they need to have that information by the sixth.
Of August.
August.
Secretary of State.
August. The Secretary Galvin's office would need to know what is going to go on the ballot by the sixth.
On the state...
Which is Wednesday.
November fourth ballot?
Which is Wednesday, yes.
Okay.
They don't, they're not going to know what's going to be on the November fourth ballot, because, until after the primary at that point, right? September ninth is the primary.
I spoke with them again tonight, just to be sure.
So the answer is, we could...
They review the question.
We could put this question on, on Abington's ballot on November, what is it, four?
No.
We can't?
No, we cannot, because they would need the question by the sixth.
August, of August, and we won't have approval from the MSBA until September twenty-fourth.
Wednesday. And you'd also have two check-in books and two ballots.
I agree with that. I think... Oh, two ballots?
It's confusing.
I didn't know, I wasn't aware of that, okay. That, that was why I asked the question.
All right, so where are we? We're going to have it on a Saturday.
We're looking for a date of the town meeting.
Ian, he's going to have to run the meetings, I work every Saturday, so, it's all right. Get more done, so. Do you have a date?
How about the twenty-fifth?
October twenty-fifth?
And then two weeks later.
By Halloween, so we had to come in customs?
That'd be the thirty-first. And then two weeks later, the, the election.
November fifteenth.
Which would be what, November what?
October twenty-fifth.
We had, the committee had, the building committee had looked at, the first two Saturdays in October are really not options, because the first Saturday is the fourth of October, that's Yom Kippur. The eleventh of October is the holiday weekend, it's Columbus Day. So then you had the third weekend, the third Saturday is October eighteenth, and the fourth Saturday is October twenty-fifth. We were intentionally avoiding the following Saturday, which would be November first, because that would be, we thought, too close to the November fourth state election. Be a little confusing, but it's up to the board.
Well, again, in my, in my mind, there's, it's sort of two-pronged here. It's to set the special town meeting date, and then to talk about whether we're looking at one week or two weeks out.
Yep.
And, and the twenty-fifth, you know, to me, two weeks on the eighth of November. Not sure if there's a disadvantage to that.
Whose calendar is this?
Mine.
You already got it marked down, so you, you already voted?
No, this is me just writing my notes.
That's the way she influences the committee.
I guess so, and pass it around to everybody.
Did I just write, it was my calendar. I can write what I want on my calendar.
How Maureen's voting. Do we have motions for the dates?
But if you like my date.
What was your election date, Maureen?
I didn't write that down.
Oh, you did.
Ian, he just wrote it down.
It keeps the momentum going if you have them close together.
It keeps them what?
Just keeps the momentum going.
So what was your recor, what was?
The eighteenth and the twenty-fifth.
What was the committee's?
The school building committee recommended October eighteenth for a special town meeting, and October twenty-fifth for the ballot vote.
So that's a week.
One week.
That would be one week.
I got to tell you, I'm not a big fan of the one-week thing. Only, only because town, most people are going to say, okay, now it's past the town meeting, now we're going to hold an election. I don't think most people are going to do the absentee ballot thing beforehand. I just, I just, that, that concerns me, that you may be disenfranchising some people as a result of that, without them having...
Would two weeks be acceptable to you, Mr. Burbine?
Well, was there an issue with November first, if we set the special election?
Close to November fourth election, that's all. But it's not prohibited, or, you know, we, we were trying to, again, have the votes as early as possible for the construction schedule, and also as far away from the November fourth state election, so there was less confusion with people. But...
I, I would support that proposal to make it two weeks. It just seems to me, the fifteenth, the twenty-fifth...
What are your thoughts against the week, though?
What's that?
Having it...
I, I just think, people aren't used to that, number one. They're used to town meeting, and then at least three, probably three or four weeks in between, and absentee ballot, you know, you're, you're concerned about the absentee ballots. For people to request absentee ballots, I just, before the town meeting even takes place, I just don't think it's going to enter into people's minds. I just, that, that's a concern.
That, that was my concern, too. The one week, this committee has done an outstanding job, and this was like a race you just planned it perfectly. You're doing, you're just moving ahead, and then the, the one-week turnaround, so quick, it almost seems like a rush, like, what, what's the rush at the end? That was my concern on voting against the Saturday, and perhaps, you know, looking at a weeknight to get it done. I do agree, and you have some very valid points on the Saturday. Having said that, I would support the two-week.
You're not going to offend us, if that's the way you go, but I would think, I'm not speaking to the whole committee, but I think they'd probably like the town meeting to be eighteen or sooner, and then you, to decide when you'd like to have the ballot election after that.
What, what about the September twenty-seventh date for the town?
Yeah.
September twenty-fourth is the MSBA vote. What's September twenty-seventh?
Saturday.
The following Saturday.
Would we have Mary's not yet?
We, we will...
Wouldn't have the written project scope with everybody, yeah?
Yeah.
How do you word the words, in the mailing, for everybody?
We can call a town meeting anytime.
Yeah, it's two weeks notice, right?
Oh, Yom Kippur is that?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, technically, everybody in town knows what's going on, really, you know, no secret.
That's really just kind, not a formality, but it's just telling us what our percentage is. Is it fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent? So it's not something that...
We, we would not, correct. We wouldn't be invited to the September twenty-fourth MSBA meeting if they were not going to approve the project.
And if it doesn't go forward, Tom asked that question before, and that's highly unlikely, but if it doesn't, you can always cancel the town meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Would you be prepared to...
You could have town meeting on that day, and then the ballot on that day.
Could, would you, Mary Mahoney, the project manager, if we could ask her that question, if it's too tight?
Mary?
Mary?
Would you be prepared, three days after receiving notification that you're receiving the funds, would you be, would be able to do, you know, to speak before town meeting?
Better than I am doing right now.
You can do it right now. Yeah, just insert number here, yes, absolutely.
It's all right with me, we did.
You could have it on the twenty-seventh. Officially, once MSBA's board votes, that's the approval for the project. They will, following that vote, send out paperwork, et cetera, within the next two weeks, including a, a project funding agreement to move forward, sorry, the project scope and budget agreement. But that wouldn't preclude you from meeting on September twenty-seventh, because at that point, you would have your defined scope of work, your defined budget, and your reimbursement rate. The only thing that it would entail is quite a bit of work between Rick LaFond and various people in town to process the language of the vote prior to MSBA board approval. That has to be put together, it has to be submitted to MSBA, and they must approve the specific language of your town article and your ballot vote. So those are just things that we would need to work with.
You could work on those now, right?
Yes, we could. We'd start it right away, and it's something we'd work with, Rick, to make sure that we're getting that thing, those, that language approved in straightaway before your September twenty-seventh. We'll also check with MSBA first thing tomorrow morning, and make sure that they also don't have any issues with it.
I think that's, personally, I think it's a great idea. Plus, you're going to get the excitement of announcing on the twenty-fourth, and then you're going to go right into that town meeting. But, Tom?
Yeah, I, I don't, I think it's a good idea. The, the only question, though, I'm going to raise now is, if, if you hold the special election on the eleventh, that's Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to do that.
So I think we'd want to do it on the eighteenth.
That spaces the three elections apart enough, so that, you know, September, October, November.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'd be fine with that.
Motion?
I'll make the motion to set the special town meeting date for September twenty-seventh.
Time?
Time.
At nine o'clock?
Is that the, you guys want it in the morning?
Ten?
Ten o'clock.
No, you said...
Nine or ten, doesn't matter.
Let's go ten, I think it's...
We're, we're expecting, asking people to show up at least an hour early to help check in early, so whatever you say, nine or ten...
Ten o'clock.
Doesn't matter to me.
The Lions can't sell hot dogs, then.
Oh, you don't can.
They can sell coffee and donuts.
I'm kidding.
Motion's made, do we have a second on that motion? Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Are we choosing the ballot now, too?
I'd like to make a motion to set the ballot question, town election, special town election, for Saturday, the eighteenth.
Time?
Do we want to do a time now, or do you want to leave that?
Polls open from eight to six.
Ten eighteen.
All right, motion's made and seconded.
Hold on a second.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion?
Leanne, you had spoke to this earlier, you, you had different, what was your suggestion on the time?
I was looking for a shorter time period.
Twelve to one?
Oh, seriously, I mean...
No, I'm thinking eight to three or something? Eight to one.
I, I would, eight to two, eight, no?
I think eight to six.
That's what people are used to.
That's fine. Do you want to go eight to six? Lots of people who work during the day to come to vote also. So I'm working, no five. Eight to five, then. All right. No further discussion on that? So the election is October eighteenth, hours from eight to six.
Six p.m.
Eight to six, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Circus tents.
Yes, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, you want to come up to, to the microphone, Mr. Drew?
I'm going to, on that note.
I have a question for Sean.
Okay.
With the, with the people that are going to be there, we're talking, what, twelve hundred people, fifteen hundred? I'm a, was a facilities manager. How do we handle the bathrooms? Do you have to, we'd probably have to get portables to go out with the tents.
This is Dave Drew, and he's just been appointed to our subcommittee to work out all the details.
Never want to give me a part of time.
Well, I, I would like, you know, is, I'll work with the town manager's office, maybe if anyone will select, I'm sure we'll have a meeting and really plan everything out. Safety, security, and efficiency is...
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drew.
Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Thank you, thanks, Sean, thanks. All right. Next item of business is approval of May twenty-seventh, June second, and June ninth, open session minutes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes on May twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen.
You want to do them all?
And June second, twenty-fourteen, and June ninth, twenty-fourteen. Open session minute, minutes.
Second.
The ones for the twenty-seventh, I was going to say, the ones I think for the twenty-seventh, I don't, it's not saying I was here. I thought I was, but maybe I wasn't. I'm just saying, I don't think I can vote on those if I wasn't here, but I thought I was.
All right, so why don't we just do, can we do them separate, just so that she can, all right, the minutes of May twenty-seventh, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-seventh.
Oh, never mind, it was one meeting that I wasn't here.
Yep, that's fine. So May twenty-seventh, the motion, Tom, seconded by Andrew Burbine, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, one abstention. June second and June ninth, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote. Tom Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I'll just take a few off the written update I provided dated July thirty-first. First point is, is tomorrow we'll be having our final, interviews with our finalists for the position of the director of our veterans district. That will be in Whitman. There are two finalists, and we're pretty excited about either one of them, and I'm sure the board will be pleased with either also. Another point is, the, this, the rail trail project that links up to Rockland is coming to a close. Hopefully, within two weeks, the project will be completed by the, by the contractor. And there has been some discussion about maybe a formal ribbon cutting, perhaps in September. That's to be hashed out a little bit, but just to put that in your consciousness. And I did have a citizen come to me today, probably about an hour ago, and, and tell me that he's already taking full advantage of the trail as our other citizen, so that, that's good to see. So keep, we'll, we'll keep you informed, but it is, again, having So keep, we'll keep you informed, but it is, again, having some sort of formality to it is something we're probably looking at. You've probably already received the paperwork, but good news is, we have been, our community development block grant for our housing rehab program has been funded again this round at $780,000. Approximately two-thirds of that grant is for, more or less earmarked towards the town of Abington. It was funded for the first time two years ago, and communities are eligible every two years. It is not that prevalent to be funded two rounds in a row, though, so we're very pleased about that. The Memorial Arch project, yes, it is going to move forward at some point here. The bronze work has been awarded this past week, and the masonry work, which is the major piece of it, should be moving within two weeks. They should be mobilizing. They've gotten final order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and just need a sign-off by the Historical Commission. So should be some work going on out there pretty soon. We had hoped that it would be going by, in July, but it's running a little behind schedule.
Rick, do we have a funding for both pieces of that right now?
Yes, in fact, the final piece of funding was a gift from the Tricentennial Committee. They had some remaining funds, so they felt it would be appropriate to put it towards the restoration of the arch.
Thank you.
And one last piece I'll just point out is, the fire chief has been doing, as you know, a lot of research on aerial trucks, ladder trucks, whichever town decides to buy, and he has got, leveled that down to two vendors that have, that make a vehicle that will fit the existing facility. As you know, from your former conversations with the chief between here and the Finance Committee, the operational problems from having to move a ladder truck to this station two were significant, so he's pleased that he's found two vendors. We will be having a conversation internally about the procurement process for, to achieve the purchase of one of those, too. And I know the board is interested in, obviously, before anything's finalized, having some, a good update on what the different financing options are, and those will be forthcoming once we have a better understanding of range of what the price will be. The chief is confident, though, that when the procurement process is completed, that will be well within the appropriation the town has already made for that.
Are we still going down in the direction of a tower ladder?
Yes, but again, that's, it's still a decision to be made, recommendations still to be made by the chief. And that's all I'm going to point out. Feel free to forward any questions, or ask any questions about anything else here.
A couple of things, Southfield legislation, you want to give a little brief recap on that, I mean, as far as what you know so far?
As of last week, late Friday night, I think it was after midnight, it was actually on July 31st, was it Friday? It was passed by the Senate with some minor amendments to the House. It was on the governor's desk today, I don't know if he's actually signed it yet, it was anticipated that he would sign it. There is a memorandum of agreement, which I'm going to ask the chairman actually to sign tonight, which commemorates the discussion between the Board of Selectmen and Starwood. But as of this moment, I don't know if the governor's actually signed the legislation, but it was anticipated that he would probably do so today, probably without any further amendments.
Our, the new legislation gives us one representative on the board, and that's going to have to be filled after a certain time after the bill is passed, I believe.
Correct.
When that's available, even, you know, can you just post that on the website and let people know?
Absolutely.
Even if we don't have a meeting until then, because I think there's some time restraints as to when that has to be done.
The newspaper is not always correct, but the ledger on Saturday morning said that the legislation did not pass, and that it was probably going to pass through the informal session. Is that not the case?
Yeah, I was, I was told by Senator Keenan's office that it was passed by the Senate, it previously passed by the House sometime after midnight on July 31st, but it had not been passed, but it had not been on the governor's desk for him to sign before the end of the year, but it was...
Page, headline about the legislation not passing.
Public announcements, I missed that at the beginning, does anybody have?
Yes, a question. I might suggest we send a letter of thanks and appreciation to Senator Keenan and Representative Deale, emails I got across my computer, they did a lot of work and sent us a lot of information, so I think it'd be nice if we sent them, some acknowledgement.